Call me in order, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let the minutes reflect that Amador is not here, and neither is Kristen. Amador is on his way up to his son's wedding, understandable.
Yep.
Okay, at this point, I will, Superintendent, report on the procedure plan presentation.
Yeah. So, I'll run through, once I get this set up.
All right.
All right, so we've worked from June, probably starting in June, we did a thought exchange, starting the process of the communication for strategic plan, so, and there are packets over there, if anybody like a packet, this is also on board docs, but basically, what we did is we used a organization called Blueprint, and they are superintendents to Jason and Kevin, they're two superintendents, that offer their expertise in strategic planning, because strategic planning can be mind-numbing, so they actually helped us with this process. We started in June, and that was the thought exchange, and we got community feedback, and then in July, we met with the administration team and the board to kind of look at some of that thought exchange, to look at all the different, the feedback we got, and then we met with community members and parents, they came out, and we looked again at the feedback, and kind of started delving through, what can the plan look like, what is achievable, and things like that. So, basically, you know, out of this blueprint, and with conversations with parents, community members, administration, teachers, pretty much all of our stakeholders, we came up with this mission, and the mission, and with a strategic plan, it does run for five years, what I'm hoping for the strategic plan is, in my purpose for it, it will drive budget discussions, it will drive faculty meetings, it will drive professional development, because I know I have worked for several districts, and usually when they do a strategic plan, it ends up in a binder, and a lot of times, it's used almost like a bookend in a bookcase. It doesn't get pulled out, it's almost like that textbook you had in high school that was later used to prop up the middle of your bed, you know, to keep the mattress from going down. So, we looked at our mission, to provide an educational experience with multiple pathways that prepare students as well-rounded thinkers who are ready for their future. This also aligns with what the state is currently talking about, they're doing a blue ribbon commission on graduation pathways, looking at multiple pathways for graduation, so it does align us for the future of what New York State is looking for. Our vision is, we are a school of excellence that provides comprehensive and diversified experiences for each student, one district, every student, it still goes along with our, kind of like the missions, or I call it like our slogan that we see on our cards, it's seen on our website, it is, every elder student will learn to their full potential, so it's still along that same vein, which I like. Core values, respect for others, collaboration, compassion, respect, trustworthiness, accountability, a strong work ethic, inclusiveness, excellence, integrity, personalization, leading by example. We got these kind of values from looking at the thought exchange, what parents were saying that they want for their kids. So, really, what it comes down to is three priority goals, and we really wanted to stay under the number of five, because we wanted very specific goals that could be attainable. So, the three areas we're looking at is academic excellence, we will create multiple pathways for students that synthesize both academic and industry excellence, so we've got to look not just at college, but career, and again, it goes along with what the state wants to do, is multiple pathways to graduation. The student experience, offer diverse opportunities that are accessible to all students in the district. We are small, but we should still be able to offer a multiple, multitude of opportunities for our kids. Operations, we will provide a state-of-the-art environment that is conducive to improved learning experiences and outcomes while employing high-quality staff that communicate and engage in first-rate learning. So those are the three areas. Now, I know this is kind of hard to see, but we will post it on the website, so that people can see it. This is basically an action plan, so for each of the goals, we kind of broke it down into actions that can be attained. So, you know, for the academic excellence, you know, looking at former family engagement committee with teacher and family representatives to develop strategies, best practices to be shared with faculty in order to increase overall engagement, and that will be principals and Mr. Krebs, the director of sexual services, and it's just all these different actions we can do. There was a possibility, you know, one thing was develop connections with adjunct professors and/or community members for leading coaching after-school clubs, activities, kind of bring in some more diversified opportunities, and that we're looking at fall, spring, and that will be principals, athletic coordinator, administer annual student surveys, organize and execute an annual job trade fair. We used to do this pre-COVID, we need to bring it back, so, you know, that will be working with, you know, through Mr. Conklin's office, but Ms. Guerin and the guidance counselor. Develop a transition team and a plan between the elementary and junior senior high school. We know the transition from sixth to seventh grade tends to be a little bit rocky. As adults, we don't think it should be rocky, it is. They're going from one teacher to now a multitude of teachers, and sometimes we have some kids that fall into the cracks, we've got to fix that. So, looking at action plans for the student experience, develop a coordinated extracurricular schedule and menu of offerings that will be communicated to students. I don't want any student to say, I don't know what I can do in the afternoon, and that's again, like having a club fair, to make sure they are aware of every opportunity, not just sports, but book club, or, you know, if we want to do a golf club, because we, you know, or if we want to do volleyball clubs, any of those clubs, even if it deals with sports, we can also look at a STEM club. I know Mr. Jackie was talking with Mr. Conklin about esports, which a lot of our kids into gaming, and now esports are becoming pretty big in some high schools, and actually teams from different schools play each other online gaming, but it's in the school, so it's a safe space, because we also know what can happen on some of those chat rooms, so it is a safe space with esports, so we are looking at that. Develop and implement a survey questionnaire for students to share their ideas for extracurricular activities, ask them for kids' voices, communicate that clubs can be offered in other locations, support will be provided for club trips and activities, you know, again, it's asking for student responses, and again, we have who's responsible and the timeframe. So for operations, the biggest thing that I heard was communication, communication to the community, communication from the parents, out of my office, out of the high school office, and that's like the biggest thing, so that's why we have a very large thing. Provide electronic newsletters, monthly determine ways to communicate with parents, staff, students, that help them prioritize its importance, ensure that communications such as Facebook are forward-facing to the public, again, we're going to try, you know, that communication piece is big, so we're looking at that. Seek ways to encourage more student engagement, research strategy to provide more student-led clubs, a lot of this also feeds into professional development. How do we create an engaging learning environment? So, that's all, and you know, we also want parents to come into school, so how do we make this a community center, a community hub, so we're going to keep working on that. So, summer, fall, this is when we did our work, and that was, and then 2024, 25 quarterly, that's when we're going to do updates, so you're going to see not this, this time, but again, probably in November, where are we at? In February, where are we at? Because again, this is supposed to drive our discussion for budget, it's supposed to drive our professional development, drive the district, so you will see quarterly updates. And again, like that's February 2025, budget recommendations provided, then July of 2025, we come back together, we invite the community again, what did we do good things, what do we still need to work on? Because again, it's three goals, and those are attainable goals, did we make, did we do it? Do we still need to improve? So that'll be next summer, not that many meetings next summer, so just so Mr. Alec knows. And then spring of 2026, we refresh, and then 2027, we look if there needs to be a re, you know, how do we revise it, do we need to make changes, things like that, it's just always going back to the strategic plan, see where we need to make some changes, updates, things like that. So, that is strategic plan, any questions from the board?
You know, it's funny you bring up the transition from sixth to seventh grade, so my grandson moved from sixth to seventh grade this year, so they're in living room, so Victoria's a nervous wreck, I mean, you just, yeah, Victoria, now I have to tell my teacher what I want for lunch. Victoria goes, Lucas, you're going to the junior senior high school. You don't tell your teacher, you're going to Nanny's Kitchen, you tell him what you want to eat, he says. So, looking at that, I was thinking, maybe we could do something more to lines when the kids are actually in, instead of waiting for, I guess we do Regents Week now, when there's not much going on?
Yeah.
It's kind of thinking, maybe we could move that up to where they might be able to walk with, you know, like have a kid mentor them, be here for a couple hours?
Didn't we used to do that?
And go, you know, do the lunchtime?
A long time ago, I think that was...
Do the locker room thing, and the lockers, and where you go after, I just, I think it would be more meaningful to do that than just come over here, walk, and say, this is a school, and, you know?
Yeah, we used to do the big brother, big sister thing.
I think that's, I think we ought to look at that.
Mike and I have talked about making sure that this year with Michelle Gallo and Ms. Kim Guerin, to make sure that we have student shadowing for next year, so they see how the school's actually operating.
Oh, she already on it, yeah, okay, all right. It was just funny, you know, poor Lucas scared that Victoria's like, Lucas.
It's funny you say that, because like, yeah, you know, seventh grade's a wreck, when I saw your grandson today, he went like this to me, this to the law, it's all good, so.
He goes to the lunch line, and my wife goes, how you making out loose? I didn't get lost yet. I just thought that would be meaningful in order, you know, the big brother thing.
And that was one of the things we heard, even though, yes, we are two different campuses, we're still one district, it's still for every kid, the two different campuses should not operate in silos, we have to do a better job of merging that, and again, sixth to seventh grade, you're going from one, possibly two teachers in a day, to now you're having six teachers, and there's a whole lot more adults, and they're like, well, who is that lady standing at the table? Well, that would be me, you know, they don't know me, and it is, it's very anxiety-written.
It's funny, because they walk in lines, you know, night school. First couple weeks in school, you see all the kids on like the wall. Like, there was a whole hall.
I think that would be meaningful, I do.
All right, that concludes my report, thank you.
You're all set, you're good?
Good.
Mr. Conklin, secondary principal.
All right, thank you very much. So just real quick, the enrollment as of opening day 2024, we still have, actually, registrations coming in, I think people are still, you know, moving around, and moving districts and stuff, but our total to open the day was 218 students, in grade seven, 39, grade eight, 28, grade nine is 48 students, grade 10, 36, grade 11, 38 students, and grade 12 is 29 students, so small senior class this year. But the first day of school went, you know, very smoothly, we're doing two lunch periods again, we've kind of shortened the lunchtime, though, where kids are eating, so it's essentially four lunches within one, so we have seven, eight, each for 20 minutes, then they go to like a recess or a study hall, and then nine comes in and eats, and vice versa with the older grades as well. We kind of did this because we noticed that it was a long time, they were sitting there for 42 minutes, and, you know, kids, they eat, and within like 10 minutes, you're done, right? I used to leave within like five minutes, but, you know, the kids are done eating, and they're just waiting around, either to do something, so putting them in a study hall or in the gym or outside for recess, the study hall gives them opportunities to catch up on work, maybe go see a teacher that they need to, you know, finish some work for, and things like that, so they, I, it was done in the past, and this year, we talked about this summer, and we made the switch, so right now, it's working good, especially with food service, I was a little worried, but the line is moving very fast, so it's going well. So, VOTEC students began today, we had a good group go over there, I want to say it was about 23 kids total went over to VOTEC, again, we're just doing the AM this year, so one bus, one bus run, they leave in the morning around 7:25, they get back around 11:15, so a lot of juniors, which is good to see. Code of Conduct assemblies, I was going to do them tomorrow because of scheduling, and just the lunches being different this year, I'm going to do that on Monday, September 9th, where I do my code of conduct, go over the handbook, go over any updates that might, we might have in there, and just policies and procedures for the kids as they start the school year here at the junior senior high school. And open house is scheduled for Thursday, excuse me, September 19th, which is a Thursday, at 6:00 PM. We're also going to have, I'm inviting community organizations here as well, like I got Catholic Charities coming, Cornell Cooperative, we're going to have tables set up and stuff, kind of make a community outreach thing as well, we're also have a club fair, the club fair will be taking place kind of right here in the gym, where all the clubs, before they leave for that day, will set up their trifold boards and things like that, so parents can also walk around and see what clubs and activities we offer here at the junior senior high school, so, and also have those community organizations with us as well, so, yeah, we're rolling now, you know, we're at our first Friday tomorrow, so three days in, and it's going well so far, so that's all I got, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Conklin from the board? All good, thank you, Mr. Conklin, Mr. Corpetiere, your option?
Thank you, Mr. Alec, for that, Ms. Ferrera. We also had a great start to our school year, we have, our enrollment went up by about 15 students from the end of last year, so there's a lot of families, and it was also the summer registration, which is really a great sign, especially being young families, which has just been wonderful. One of the things we're going to introduce this year, on every Monday that I'm present in school, that there's an actual Monday in session, so it's not like on a slum, this day we move to Tuesday, we're going to do what we call the beginning buzz, we're going to do the announcements and the pledge in the gym with the entire school, and we'll go for the expectations, all right, if there's any trends or any behaviors that we want to discuss as a school as a whole, and it also allows us to be able to let students know what's going on that week, right, some things they may want to look forward to as well, so we're really looking forward to doing that. We, we're going to, we have our open house on September 17th, which is a Tuesday, three days prior to the junior senior high school, we'll start clubs in October, but again, the staff is pretty incredible, we have a very large pre-K class, we have 33 students right now in pre-K, and so some of them are three years old, so we have three-year-olds, right, and so many times it's not, oh, yeah, yeah, many times it's not really always the students that have the issue of walking into school, it's their parents having them walk into school, so they've been just incredible with making sure everybody's in the right place and at the right time, and with the new families that we had to come register this summer, it's really been flawless, it's been great, the staff is, is, is who to recognize for that, so that concludes my report.
Very good, any questions for Mr. Corpetiere? All good, thank you, Mr. Krebs.
Oh, evening, so first off, our opening day conference day, we actually had two of them, the first one was Robyn Sampson came in from the year of May, and we did Core Two training, last year was Core One, this year was Core Two, part of Core Two was talking about academics, so how to look at our academics, set goals, and things like that, and also our day two, our keynote speaker was Regina Clark, and she talked a lot about change, what does it mean to change, and she talked a little bit about different types of people, how they, how change affects them versus how they can handle change, and it was really a great two-hour period of time with Regina. I appreciate last, a couple of weeks ago, you had a meeting with our energy performance contract individuals, I'm sorry I was not here, but appreciate your participation, and my understanding on tonight's agenda, you will be approving Felenger Engineering to continue to look at our energy performance contracts, so hopefully both of the presenters were worthy to have here as part of a presentation to you as a board. And the other thing that I have on here is that we're going to do, make a concerted effort this year, I talked to Caleb about as many of our educational field trips to run through posters at BOSI's, so we can get monies back on that. Every now and then, we have some field trips that go out that have not run through posters, so we're going to try to do our best in planning for them throughout the year, so that we can plan for them, we can get any monies that we can in through BOSI's, and then they can take place later in the year. That's all I have to share with you.
Any questions for Mr. Krebs from the board? All good, moving on, Mr. Russell.
Okay, so I have just a few items on here, so school taxes, they were mailed out on the 30th, they are available online, if people haven't gotten them yet, I'm told that most people are starting to get them, they're trickling in. New York State has reduced the amount of the star exemption, which is unfortunate, they've done that kind of all across the state. Next year, with the board's blessing, I would like to start accepting credit card payments, that's something I can reach out to ATC, they're the, that's something we don't have to decide until sometime next March. ATC is Allen Tunnel Corporation, it would allow them to go online, where you look up your taxes, and they could pay by credit card on there. We don't collect a fee, but ATC probably does, something like 2% or 3%, which I think is pretty standard. I'd also like us to look at, I'm going to talk closer to tax time about this, but we have three installments right now, but we can no longer collect until 11:30, it used to be that we would collect until 11:15, and then we would give it to Sullivan County, and they could pay their taxes all the way until November 30th. Now, they pay the second installment October 31st, and on November 8th, your third installment's due, that's one week later. What ATC, the woman representative there, had told me is that a lot of schools now just accept partial payments, can't be below 25%, that's something for us to discuss closer to time, because obviously this year's are set, but I was interested in doing that, I don't, I like to make it as easy as possible for people to pay their taxes, and rather than just having rigid installments, basically, if they can pay any part of the tax, as long as it's at least 25%, they can do that, and that helps them limit the amount of penalties they pay, if they've got at least some of the money. And then finally, there's a volunteer firefighters, there's a new volunteer firefighters exemption, that's something we would have to vote on by March as well, I'll do a presentation on it in October or November if you want me to. It is, the old one was 10%, but it was capped, very low, the new one is up to 10%, no cap, 10% of the value of your house, if your house is assessed at 400 grand, it's a $40,000 exemption for volunteer firefighters. You can choose anywhere in between 0 and 10, so I'll make a presentation if you'd like me to, and that's something that we would have to put in place by March. I'll also get information on what the assessors and the towns are doing, you know, because if we can, I like to align with the towns, it makes it easier.
I'm definitely for it, though, I mean, they're our first responders, so.
Yeah, and so that is, that is a nice benefit for them, so with the state aid, I gave you guys a little projection sheet out there, I've been working around with it, but I'm just trying to give you guys, I'm not going to talk a lot about it, because I've been doing it to death, but three years from now, this has nothing to do with Governor Hochul's thing, this is our BOSI's aid, our BOSI's aid is going to drop off like a rock, if you look at 27, 28, it would be 24%, it would actually be 19%, this is, this one that I gave you is one I was playing around with, that's if Hochul, if, I shouldn't say it like that, if the governor, if her plan goes through, and she cuts us, and we have to raise taxes, it would be 24.5, but it would be 19% no matter what, and these are set in stone numbers, these numbers aren't projections, they're just, there's this happening, so we're going to have to make up 300 grand over the next three years, but you can see that it's, this year, not a big deal, it's going to be about the same, actually, a little bit higher, it's going to drop off like a rock after that. We do have plans in place, Tracy and I, and I am going to put together options and projections, but it's just something to keep an eye out on, I'm trying to give you guys, you know, three year, three years leeway on that. The transportation aid, don't pay attention to it quite as much, because there are other factors involved, they use the statewide averages for that, so if our property values are going up, but so are everybody else's, and they are, we won't get hit that hard, but BOSI's aid doesn't take into account anybody else's, they just look at ours, and they look at the property values, not what it's assessed at. Facilities, as of today's writing, we are within our budget for the capital project, I don't have the current change orders, because we didn't get to do our Thursday meeting this week, we usually have a meeting this morning, we're going to have it next week, and I'll give a copy of it to Tracy to send out to you guys, but we usually sit with our construction manager on Thursdays, and she goes down through what, what is or isn't happening, so the last one I gave you is the most up-to-date, but I will give you an up-to-date one when I meet with her next week, and like I said, I'll give it to Tracy to give you, and then the school lunch fund, we have the final numbers on that, school lunch funds almost always run at a bit of a deficit, the deficit went down at least this year, it was 80,000 the year before, this year it's 50. Next year, I think we might be able to break even, we reduced staffing by one person, and we bought $22,000 in equipment this year, which I don't expect to do again next year, so between those two things, that's about $47,000 alone, and then the other thing we can do is hopefully Jill and I are going to sit down, and we're going to be laser-focused on trying to keep the grocery costs down, because they're, just like everybody is dealing with at the grocery store now, we're paying a lot more for food than we were, but there are some ways that we can save, so I think I might be able to get that down to break even, and that is all I have for you today.
Any questions for Caleb? What's the other way to pay your taxes, I see on the website or something, what, 9 to 11 down to Town Hall?
Yes, so you can go, we always collect on the last day, too, so Tuesdays and Thursdays, Doreen Hansen is there, so you can physically, if you want to pay cash or do anything like that.
What's the other terms of payment?
Mail-in.
Okay, as long as we have another way, I just want to make sure, because 9 to 11, a working person ain't going to get there.
No, no, but we also do, we always do, and it's on the top of their bills, we always do at least one Saturday during the September, and then we always do the very last day of every collection period, so, you know, if you're, if you're looking, and you're like, oh shoot, I don't want to put it in the mail, because it's the 31st, and I get a penalty if I don't get in there, we do collect on the last day.
Just wanted to be sure. All right, thank you, Mr. Caleb. I apologize for not being able to be here on Thursday, I didn't realize I had made an appointment for a procedure on Thursday, and I couldn't make it, and I apologize for that, the good thing is, the results come back from the procedure, I'll be around here to aggravate you guys for a little while longer.
Like that.
I want to welcome all the new faces and all the new people working here, and welcome everybody back to have a healthy, safe, good year this year, and I'm looking forward to it, we just won our first soccer game this year, this week, or tonight, I should say, down in Port Jervis.
Two to one.
Two to one. Way to bring it home, first, first game, so.
All right.
And I got to tell you, her facility come out gorgeous, wow, I mean, you look at that, you're going to be looking at, you know, what's going on up there, but that was some facility, it really is. So with all that being said, we will move on to 8.01 approval of content items, I need a motion to approve consent items 4.01 through 7.03.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Nancy, thank you, I'm hoping, hopefully you would. Take a vote on it, Nancy?
Yes.
Stacy?
We didn't do public comment.
Oh, right, we're here, right over there. There we go, all right, let me back up. Any public, public comment on the consent agenda only? All good? Okay, back to here.
Now my vote is yes.
Yes, I'm a yes. That's done, okay. Old business, come before the board. New business, I have two things, one, I booked a hunting trip two years ago, didn't realize it was on a meeting night of October, so I'm not going to be here for the next meeting, so what I would like to do, I would like to move October's meeting to October 17th, it's the following Thursday, I'll be back on the 14th or 15th, God willing. If nobody has a problem with that, I would like to move that meeting to October 17th.
From the 10th to the 17th?
From the 10th to the 17th.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
You're good with it? Okay, perfect, that's done. The second thing I have, I was with Mr. JJ tonight down in Port Jervis, and I found out that the boys' soccer team is going to be joining up with them down there?
They did not have enough, we did not have enough boys, because they want to play football.
Right, so what we have to do for next year, we have to be on our game, they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart, letting us come down there, the paperwork and everything is supposed to be done in May, he says, we cannot do that, he says, I pulled some strings, I said, I appreciate that, because the only thing that's hurting is the seniors, there's four seniors on that team.
Yes.
So what do we send, seven kids down?
Six, I believe, six or seven.
Okay, so what I want to make sure is next year, you know, you know damn well, it's going to happen again, I mean, if you don't get them this year, you're losing four seniors, so nothing's saying, you know, so we need to get the roster out, and make sure we know what's going on, because once they vote on it, and the paperwork, this paperwork has to be filled out, we just, and JJ offered to come up to explain it, but I don't want to step on Amanda's toes.
Yes.
But we definitely need to be on our game for that, because if we're not, the only people that's going to get hurt is our kids, they're not going to have a chance to play, so, I mean, I thanked them for doing what he did, I says, if I have to sign anything, or whatever I have to do to make it work, no problem, he says, nope, he says, I think it's all good, so that's handled, but I just want to make sure we do it right next year.
And we thought we had enough kids, because when we went out in the spring, what do you want for fall, and we had enough boys to sign up, but then once it came like the rubber meets the road, once they had to get onto the sports, the website to log in, that's when we found out we didn't have enough boys.
we didn't have enough boys.
Okay.
We had a lot of football, though.
And that's, I agree.
I hear the football's up.
Yes. Well, my friends play foot, I'm going to go play football, even though they're always going to soccer play.
Yep.
I have one thing before that I forgot to mention. On the consent agenda, we had the resignation of Carol Hulse. I had originally put the fifth, because it was effective today, but I did ask her to stay till the end of the week, just until we got a replacement in. And you guys can vote on it, but are you guys okay with changing it from the fifth to the sixth?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a big change. I just forgot to bring it up before we did the consent.
That's fine.
But yes, I agree that, you know, for next year, with, well, it's not just, with each season, we have to make sure that the kids, if they say they're going to do it, they're going to do it, and we have to know ahead of time, again, like, because we're getting ready to go into the winter. Can we field teams?
Yep. Yeah, we just, being small like that, we just have to make sure that we got our ducks in a row, and it doesn't slip through the cracks.
I agree.
Any other public comment on anything anybody wants to talk about? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's an update on just our facilities and how the construction is going for our demo project.
You want to know the update?
Yeah.
The building's up, the concession thing, you have the press box, everything's up. The baseball field, I think, is almost done, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Baseball field is good.
So when I went up there.
She'd tell you better. I drive up and drive, not you.
We went up there yesterday, the, the baseball field, when I went up there last week, they had already started rolling out the drainage. It almost looks like the, and there, it's a, how do I, it looks like a carpet, but it's all these pipes, but they're very small. They're laid out for the turf to be laid on top. So the infield is ready to go, the outfield is already planted, they've got the foul poles up, it's already been, it looks gorgeous. The fence is up, the place where the scoreboard is already there. Now, if I look on the backside, because we repositioned home plate, the fieldhouse, I am just in awe, because it looks beautiful up there. You know, the plumbing's done, the electric's done, and that will, it's really looking like it's going to create that community hub plaza. They already put in the high jump area, the shot put, the discus. The discus looks really cool, because they've got like the cage going up over it, that looks really cool. The bleachers, the ramp is almost done with the concrete. The bleachers, they put the concrete footings in, we're waiting on the bleachers to actually arrive. The actual field, like it's, they've moved so much earth, and they have begun started rolling out the, the irrigation for the turf. What we're running into is the, I'm confident to say that for homecoming, we are still on track to have homecoming. We are still on track to hold homecoming.
Not the track.
But the only caveat is, the track will be paved, the track will, the surface of the track will not probably be done, because we're running into frost. So the surface of the track takes two weeks to cure, then once you hit certain degrees in temperature, so my thing is, I just want, if I can get the soccer and the football field, and then the track, kind of what they consider paved, but it's not surface, then we can do the track in the spring, because I don't want that track surface to get messed up by frost. I would rather wait and do that. So, but right now, talking to Josh and Boys Excavating, they are still on target for homecoming.
So we actually might have a local voting?
Yes.
Yes.
You're up there working right now.
Yep.
We approved you overtime two weeks ago.
To make sure it happened, yeah.
As long as, there was like two weeks of pretty much solid rain.